Thank you for bringing us together today to do the county's business. Pray for Jen, Jen's wife, she's in a hospital. Yes, that you put your healing hands on her. Yes, that you bless those troops that are out there protecting our freedoms. And to protect those that are here on our side, protecting our rights, law enforcement and the EMS and then any first responders. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Go Texas!
You're messing up the script.
I've gotta hear something 2,000 times. Get the gist.
I'm gonna eliminate one for you.
Put it on that screen.
Just put it on that big screen there. Stand there. Sit there.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action could be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Yes, sir?
I'd like to speak. I know Sean and Mr. Merritt has done it. I had got my taxes a few weeks ago. Opened them up and was pleasantly surprised that mine on my home had gone down $10 on county side. Now, my farm and my royalties and all dropped 400 on my total tax bill. And I would like to challenge the rollback people to come up here and tell us what their taxes are if they feel like they could. I think we're upfront and willing to say, hey, this is what mine are. If you want to go downstairs and check them, do it. But I challenge them, if they're getting hit so hard on higher taxes, come up here and tell us what they are. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Can I respond?
Well, it's not a back and forth.
I mean, I just respond to your rollback questions, so here I am.
If you want to speak for your three minutes, you're allowed to do that.
Okay. I too went down $400. No, it wasn't that much. It was $2.44 went down on my house. However, three and a half or three to four years ago, it went up $350 from year to the next. And that's over all. And I'm sorry, I'm on a fixed income. I can't afford jumps like that in taxes. Everybody else went down? Our effective rate went down? It should have went down too, to where it's back to break. If you want the extra million dollars, you lost it over time, then you're gonna have to rebuild it over time. Just rebuild it by one year. And then still expect us to pay for it. I didn't lose that money. I didn't do it. I didn't make all those decisions. You, sir, were here for 10 or 14, no, 16 years, I'm told. So, you were part of that situation. I wasn't.
Do you know that?
And I'm just saying that that's the way I look at it. My brother has his tax bill. He owns a lot of land. He's hit hard. Right now, he's struggling. Big time. You talk about insurance, he pays $2,500 a month for him and his wife to have private insurance because he's a farmer. You try to bank on that. I paid $200 a month for my retirement insurance. And it doesn't cover vision, doesn't cover dental. If I'm on that, I'm gonna have to pay extra. So, it hurts hard. And I'm not the only one. There's a lot of people around here. And no, I'm not old enough. I'm not 62 or 65 or whatever it is for that. I'm only 58. So, I'm gonna be held accountable for a long time for that. And it's, it's not just one bill. It's every bill. Everything comes to these people at the same time. And if we can cut corners somewhere, for instance, county taxes cut a little bit, it helps us. Not, not everybody, I suppose. And sometimes when I have a budget to adhere to, I tighten myself down. For instance, I don't buy things. I have a truck that's a 2012. It's probably gonna have to last for another seven or eight years. Because have you seen the prices of trucks? I can't afford it. And I have to have a truck where I live. I do, when you haul stuff, when you do stuff, when you go out in the field to pick up your brother out in the field because his tractor's not working right now and you're the closest one there, you have to have a truck to do that. You can't go in a car. And I'm just here to say that I'm not for myself. I'm here for my brother. I'm here for my other brother who gets hit hard and hurtly, and hurtly taxes. I get hit, I'm here for everybody that can't come themselves. And the reason why they don't come is because they're hit by some people around here. They're told that you're stupid or you're dumb or whatever you're doing is not correct. And time has, has come.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. That's three minutes.
Please come see me in my office. I'd like to help you understand a little better about what's going on.
Oh, I know what's going on.
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
I was screening any master seat that's re-licensed here. No deficiencies, so we're good for 2022.
Anybody else want to speak in this room?
Thank you. Getting you right here. I guess I did. Oh, maybe you scratched your nose.
Thank you for coming. All right, court, to discuss and consider increasing project schedules. Anything we need to be aware of? Anything we need to discuss in the precinct?
I don't, I want to discuss one thing. Yes. I know we got to have a a test sometimes. But I don't understand why we gotta have it in the middle of the day instead of early, when they can come and go back to work. We had two four months. You're supposed to be here. Well, of course, I had the wrong time, all right? I'll admit that. But when you take two funds at one time and they're on both that a way, and you're on the job, you just, you just, it's just a bad time in the middle of the day. My deal is, they don't go to us, working for us. We're not working for them. My second deal and the main deal is, I still don't know why the devil that we're not using those in our own hometown. I understand he does it all yonder across the street to his hands. We've got the health unit here. It ought to be able to do it. We've got the hospital to do that, you know? Which I don't like because they send mine to Louisiana. We got this fellow up the road here that's got a business that does that that's here in Snyder.
On that second, when that came around this year, it was so late in the game that we have already been contracted with them, contracted already kind of renewed. So, that is something that will be looked at in the future as far as using someone more local. As far as
But I don't have some contract gonna be broken again with.
Well, we kind of
We paid the annual fee already, but it is coming up for renewal in January.
So, we can definitely do that pretty quick and see if we can do something different. I agree with you. I agree. It's pretty expensive. Well, it's, it adds up. It's something we shouldn't be paying for outside.
Yeah.
Outside Skerrit County anyway. As far as timing, I'm, what, what time are the
Today it's at 11:45.
Yeah.
And that's probably because I had to drive from out of town to come and do it.
The last time they did it at like 1:15.
Right. Well, that's something we can look at in the future, definitely. See if we can fix that situation. I agree with you. It should be first thing in the morning. Anytime other than first thing in the morning.
My God.
I would just like to remind the commissioners that next Tuesday at 8:30 at the library, need all the hands to move the library books. Just want to remind y'all one more time.
Oh, Monday.
Tuesday. I'm glad I brought it up.
If you told me Monday, I'm gonna blame you.
So, if y'all remember to tell your crews, they don't need to bring a trailer, we'll have one.
You can't do it?
I can do it a whole lot faster with Dale.
They don't play long.
Okay, so that's next week.
Next Tuesday.
What time, what, when does the book sale start?
Friday, Saturday, I'm not sure.
Gotcha. Anything else?
New business, court, consider resolution authorizing county grant on the home delivered meal program. Can you tell us about this?
Yeah. This is just a resolution. This is about the fourth year that we've taken friends, funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture. And here's about $12,000 that they give us a year for home delivered meals. So, it's just part of the application process. It's for the county to do the resolution.
Is it approved? You need to know what's on the resolution. We desire to apply for the grant funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture to supplement and extend existing services for homebound persons in the county who are elderly and or have a disability pursuant to the home delivered meal program. And it'll be from January 1st to December 31st of 2020.
I'd like to motion we authorize the resolution authorizing county grant for the home delivered meal grant program.
Second. All in favor?
I'm just a original judge.
Court, consider a resolution approving the hazard mitigation program. Okay. Approval of West Central Texas Council of Governments hazard mitigation program. Yes, sir?
I'm so sorry. I don't think you saw me behind you there.
Peter, jump.
I came to scary county to scare people. I'm sorry. My name is Jay Hardaway. I'm with H2O Partners and West Central Texas Cog. I know you guys are aware of the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan and purpose of it, but I'll kind of do 30,000 foot view for the benefit of the folks that are here today. Skerrit County is a member of the West Central Texas Council of Governments, which is headquartered in Abilene. And one of the services the cog provides is hazard mitigation action planning for member counties and cities. What that is, is it's a requirement from FEMA and from the Texas Department of Emergency Management that communities in Texas have essentially a plan for how to prevent weather hazards in their community. You can't really prevent the tornado, but you can minimize the impact it has in the community by area-wide emergency notification system or a community shelter or something like that. Similarly, you can minimize the impact of fires by keeping culverts cleared or whatever. And so, what these plans are, are essentially a list of actions recommended to cities or counties in this case that they can undertake over these plans last five years, over that five-year cycle to mitigate hazards. And then, five years later, you start all over again. And so, it's time, and I brought before you guys today a resolution to adopt the new plan, which replaces the current plan. And I'll, within the cog, you've seen one county, you've seen one county. Sometimes it's the county that takes all the initiative and is really driving the process. Any of you guys have been involved with anything at the cog? You know, it's primarily county elected officials that are on the executive committee and they're really involved up there. And so, typically, it's sort of county-heavy because they're the ones that are up there hearing about it all the time. Sometimes it's a city. I'll use where I'm from, Abilene, as an example. City of Abilene has a much larger emergency management staff than Taylor County. So, they're kind of the lead dog. Some of the more rural counties, you know, it's the county. Here, it's sort of different. It's kind of a hybrid where City of Snyder and Skerrit County are kind of at the table for all. And we've been having meetings to put these plans together since 2017. And there's been good attendance from both the county and city level. This has been an ongoing process. I'd be remiss to not thank Perry, West woman in the city. He's been a really kind of a driving force on this. And I know he's gone to a lot of meetings and kind of shepherded it through to City of Snyder. But anyway, happy to take any questions. Two things I always like to say, to try to anticipate at least a couple of questions. This has nothing to, I don't say it has nothing to do, it has very little to do with emergency. I'm sorry. I'm just gesturing right in her face. It says very little to do with emergency response. This is about sort of prevention. So, you have an emergency action plan or emergency response plan that is totally separate from this. So, in the event, God forbid, of a natural disaster here, it's not like nobody's gonna show up because you don't, you're not holding the plan up in the air or whatever. And the other thing is, this plan, while, while it is a requirement, it is not the Ten Commandments. It's not carved in stone and can be amended at any point. And so, I would encourage cities and counties to, I mean, yes, it's supposed to last for five years, but you know, take a look at it each year, once a year maybe, especially as you're doing your budget. And, and see, oh, well, actually, we, we took care of that one already. So, what's the next step? You know? And you can add to it or take things away or whatever. And that's a pretty easy process. It can be handled through the cog. So, again, happy to take any questions. And I appreciate the time, Judge.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Absolutely. I also have a sign-in sheet that the cog requires, and I'm just gonna, and that's for citizens and elected officials and staff. I'm just passing it around to the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds good. Do you have any questions or comments?
I just gotta say that the West Texas Council of Governments has always done a very good job for Skerrit County and other surrounding counties in this area in grants and a lot of other things that they do. Far as you call them, they help, if they can at all. They've helped us a lot in the past, and we appreciate that very much. And I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the hazard mitigation plan update.
Okay. So, I agree that cog is a huge asset for Skerrit County. All in favor?
Do you want all the originals?
Court, to discuss and consider statement of agreement between West Texas Centers and Commission's Court pursuant to the Texas Mental Health and Recovery Act.
Okay. This is the agreement with us and MHR to provide the office space. Down there at the, at the
In it.
Yeah. There is another agreement with them for the jail as far as inmates goes, correct? This kind of snuck up on me. I was wanting to discuss with them, both of them at the same time, but we'll work on that later. But this is basically the same thing that we have been doing throughout the past.
So, since we are going to be discussing both sides of it in the future, since they do a very good job for our community, I would certainly make a motion that we agree to continue to support them as we have in the past.
Okay. Sean said, all in favor?
Court, to discuss and consider interlocal agreement between Lovett County and Skerrit County pursuant to the Fair Defense Act. What this is, is a, an agreement with not just Lovett County, it's a regional length agreement. If there were a capital case here in Skerrit County, it would be very expensive. This covers that. We would pay, can we find it here? Six, yes, yes. Whole lot less.
$6,387.
$6,387 per year for the next two years, which is less than what it was before. It was a little over $8,000, correct?
Yeah.
Before that?
Based on percentage of cases that are in each county.
Well, I think it's just a percentage.
Percentage, because we haven't had any capable, it's total cases though, not because we haven't had any couple of cases. So, it's based off of average cases per year and then the total population, the percentage of total population, the average cases per year, percentage total cases, and then it has, it's been assigned the amount for fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. So, our amount was less for 2021 than it was for the previous two years because there's been less cases.
One of the counties has half her population and they pay $1,600, but they have no cases on average. Sure. Makes a lot of difference.
However, if you look, like at where San Angelo is, somewhere where they have a lot of capital murder trials and stuff like that, their, their savings is astronomical. So, if we ever were to have a capital murder trial or a capital case, the savings
You're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars if you're not in this agreement. Yeah, not me.
And this is also part of our Texas Indigent Defense Plan. So, since we received money from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, this goes into the plan that the district judge writes and submits to them for the grant money that we receive.
Yeah, he just completed that.
Yes.
I think this is the best insurance policy you could ever have, and we've had it for a good long while. It does very, serves the county very well and all the counties that are in it. I'd make a motion that we approve the interloper agreement between Lovett County and Skerrit County percent for their sense.
Right. Court, to discuss and consider contract agreement with Mitel for county line phone system, contract permitting that permanent services.
This is something that we've kind of looked at for, what, about six months now?
About six months.
Don Black is with Permianet and David Nicholson's here for the city. He's, the city had this before I left and I can attest to it personally. The phone system we have are old and outdated. When we need to replace a phone, it's, it's getting harder to find them. Internet services, as you know, is not the greatest and it's expensive. We also get support from CTSI that we pay monthly. I didn't write down the toll number right now, but it's about $1,700 a month.
1143 and then 63660 just for CTSI monthly on support. I have the annual amount that we currently pay to CTSI. The base pay, $21,355.20 to CTSI only, just for the support, not for any additional call-outs or anything else that they possibly would do over the phone.
Right. And that doesn't include the trend virus protection that pay anywhere from $110 to $140.
Or any of that stuff.
Right. Don with Permianet has looked at our whole setup here and he feels like Permianet can help us and do some major improvements. So, Don, if you'd like to
Sure. Well, we've been here since 2013. We built a wireless wide area network that covers the whole city that the city signed on to back in 2013. And we took over providing all of their internet service. And in addition to that, we basically created a private wide area network. The city, all the city facilities can communicate directly with one another. They can also communicate with the internet. We manage and monitor all that for them. It gives them a lot of additional capabilities. Dave can talk about some of the things that he needs to, that he does using our network. It essentially lets him sit at his desk and manage, control, do all the things he needs to do from an IT perspective. We're proposing to do that for the county. You currently have a fairly complex and pretty expensive setup of internet access and phone systems, primarily through Suddenlink, that, that can only do a limited amount of things. We would be replacing all that with something that costs less and can do quite a bit more. And that's essentially what this is talking about. The phones have to be a part of this because Suddenlink being your internet provider, it's also bundled with your phones and that's a tariff service and gets into all sorts of complicated things. So, you really can't do one without considering both. Because when you replace Suddenlink for internet, you have to replace Suddenlink for phone. But as Judge Hicks pointed out, there's more than just the Suddenlink phone. There's all these antiquated phone systems and things like that. We propose to simplify all that. And as part of the fee you see here, we, we manage it all for you. We monitor it, we manage it, we provide edge firewall and security services, basically everything for the fees that you see there. We can, because it's wireless, we're not limited in our footprint necessarily. We're talking about deploying additional equipment on a county tower, which will provide us the capability to even reach out as far as some of the precinct barns, things like that. So, basically, anything that we can see from these towers, we can connect to your network. And we've been doing this for, like I said, since 2013 here in Snyder and doing it various places around the country long before that. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
I've been looking forward to this for a very long time, since the first time I heard about it from David and some of you guys came and visited with us. And it's something that I think will bring us into the 21st century and help us all to have better communications throughout the county.
I would like to add something real quick before anybody says anything about changing over and it's gonna cost more. It's actually going to be if we switch both Mitel and Permianet, what we pay currently to Suddenlink for our current phone system that we have for annually is $53,904.48. What we would pay to Mitel for their phone system is $29,551 a year, a savings of $24,353.28 a year. Current link for internet, we pay $21,364.92. Plus, you add in the CTSI of the $21,355.20 basis, base charge, that's $42,720.12. And Permianet is $34,200, which is a savings of $8,520.12 total savings a year of $32,873.40 base, not including service charges and all that because we would no longer be with CTSI and Permianet provides all of that within the contract.
Why are we talking about it?
Well, there's more to it too. I mean, with, with the phone system, you get so much more than what we have before, what we have right now.
One other added point, that's a very big plus for most department heads and elected officials, is that we are going to pay this all out of 409, which is the non-departmental, and we will not have separate billing going to all of the different departments so that if they don't get their bill printed in time, they get a late fee or a dissonant notice, it will all be paid all out of 409. And so, essentially, I will do a budget amendment if we switch. I would do a budget amendment out, or a line down transfer from the communications lines of all of the departments to the 409 line so that it would be covered. But no more having to figure out the Suddenlink bill and worry about it getting there on time because Suddenlink keeps switching up their processes.
What you're pulling.
Can I just speak on one point on my phone system? What that difference is, the city is everywhere except the police department. It's just an extension now. All of us, I mean, you can dial 1,600, every building's connected. If a phone goes bad, you call them, they ship you another one. It's all already programmed for you. And Mitel's real good. If you need help, call and take care of it. But it made our landfill just an extension instead of having to go, well, hold on, their phone number's this and send in someone. You can now just transfer them to whatever, wherever you needed them to go.
And on the data communication side, it's basically the same thing. Yeah. You, to, to data communications that are talking to your county applications or file servers and it, you just look like one big site. You know, our network handles all that traffic automatically, securely internally, without it having to be routed over the internet and back into the location.
And this will be at every facility that we have.
Well, without a
Well, would that have, would it apply to my, or affect my nine-one-one trunk line? Would it?
We are not touching the nine-one-ones. The, the, the nine-one-one to, you know, PSX and Dispatch, that's its own piece. And that is not something we would get involved in. If, if there's some way we can help, we have, would be happy to. But no, we would, we would stay completely.
It would require conversion there?
No, absolutely not.
Say that saving one more time.
All of it?
The total savings.
The total savings? Uh, the total savings annually, thirty-two thousand eight seventy-three forty base.
And that's taking the mark in it. It's done.
Yes.
That's each year.
That's the minimum saving.
Kind of like the kids can't ride, can't read and can't math.
Yes.
It includes.
That's the same thing.
You will get, do you have a phone out there?
Not currently. Um, he doesn't. But as, as, uh, this gentleman stated, once they have the internet, you instead, you won't be paying Y power, you would, for your, or a tran, I forget the name of your, yours, I think it's Y power, but it might be tran, something else. For your internet, it would be, because the barn is in within distant sight of the internet, the tower, then it would connect and it would be high-speed internet. So you wouldn't be paying an additional internet fee from somebody else. It would all be Permianet. Same at the golf course, same at, uh, precinct four barn, precinct three, you know, all of those, the Humley Water Works. All of those areas that right now, they have to have a different internet provider because Suddenlink doesn't go there. All of those would then be able to reach the satellite and be on, on our system through our stuff.
That's one of the things we found at the city. They had a couple of sites that Suddenlink was, I'd actually given quotes, hadn't they, to, to reach those sites and that they weren't currently adding the numbers.
In the landfill, everybody knows how far it is. There was no one. We use the satellite internet such as be speaking of and when the wind blows from the cotton fields, you probably got, can't even run a credit card. And now, like say me personally, I can connect to their desktops from my desk, work on their computers without having to drive all the way to the landfill where I used to and sit on hold with somebody trying to figure out why the stuff.
You got it online one day. That's great.
I still wonder why we're talking about it. I'd like to motion we enter to the contract agreement with Mitel.
And Permianet.
And Perm, yes.
Okay, because it is two different companies. There will be two bills, but it'll all go through, uh, the owner's office instead of all these separate bills. Now, uh, Don and I were talking about this earlier. It's going to take a little bit of time to get, uh, Mitel. We, if we sign this contract with Mitel today, they will start charging us. And they need a little time to put some stuff in place. We talked about three or four weeks. So do we want to wait to sign it in three or four weeks when they're ready to go or?
I would think so. And also, we need to give the county attorney a chance to look through the contract, make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's it.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So you're going to give the judge the authority to sign?
Yes.
Once it's time to take off.
Also the notice to CTSI and Suddenlink.
Right, now this, uh, CTSI, their contract ends at the end of, uh, this year. They need sixty days' notice.
That's going to happen.
Yeah, it is.
From our standpoint, once an agreement's in place with us, first of all, we don't bill you until the service at that location is actually up. So what is going to take that time that takes? But we will coordinate with Mitel and with Suddenlink because what we don't want is for something to go dead before we're in place and ready to take over. And so, but we'll manage all that. We've got a project plan that will address these things. But also sometimes with companies like Mitel, and David's had experience with it as well, that he can help advise us. If you sign the contract, they give you a certain period of time to implement or they ship you your phone. And even if you don't have them turned on, they start billing. And we want to avoid that. So we want to make sure that we're ready to take over, uh, right away.
And I wanted to say until they ported the numbers, I mean, they send you the phones and basically they're labeled whatever and you just plug them in at whatever date I told you. And they say, on twenty-first at noon, Suddenlink's dead. So have them plugged in and sitting there and then at that moment, whenever it switches and they're doing it, was when I believe it started billing.
We're going to work with Jeremy directly and we're going to help manage all that for you. Um, the other thing, I believe part of the Mitel deal is they included, I believe, three months, three months free service. So worst-case scenario, we would have three months when you wouldn't be paying the Mitel bill in case anything happened. But, but we want to take full advantage of that. We want you to get that as a credit. So, so we want to make this happen correctly.
And no other cost for any equipment?
Uh, no, there are, on a three-year contract, there is no, no.
Or monthly cost.
Uh, no.
When it becomes older, when it gets outdated, what do we do then?
Well, the, um, as, as far as our side of it is concerned, we own, the, the pieces out on the network and we're, we're going to do a fairly significant network upgrade just when we bring you guys on. And that's, that's at our expense. You don't pay for, for that equipment on our side. Now, we talked to Judge Hicks about some Wi-Fi implementations and things like that that we made. But, but that's, that's minor and, and separate. On the Mitel side, that's really kind of, they're a separate company, so that's kind of between you and them. But I can tell you from experience, by the time this contract is up, there are not going to be any significant advantages, uh, advances in physical phone technology that are going to make you want to upgrade that device. Voice-over IP technology's gotten pretty stable in the last few years. I imagine when it comes time for contract renewal, they'll have some things that they may want to show you and say, would you be interested in upgrading? But I wouldn't think it would be necessary.
The thing with Mitel is it's all a added amount. If you want a wireless handset, four dollars. If you want a headset, three dollars. If you want, like me, my desk phone is right here. I've got an app that when it rings my desk phone, it rings here. So I can answer it wherever I want. That's an added piece. So you can mix and match. Say, I want three headsets, I don't want, I do. And it's pretty much just a price lift. So you pick and choose what you want. And like I say, if it goes bad, you call and say, hey, it's not working. They ship you another one, put the old one in the box and send it back.
Now, some of these features David's describing are actually included in the bundle that they proposed. Turns out that what, what you, David initially bought was from when they purchased a company called ShoreTel. They actually don't offer the exact same plan anymore. They just started bundling a bunch of these things into their base plan. So some of these things are actually even now already included.
And I will say one more good thing about it because of Perry. He took his desk phone in his mobile command center, which is the ambulance that he takes to fire, and off of a MiFi box, that phone is his desk phone. It works just the same sitting out in Pluvana with a Wi-Fi box as it does sitting next to your desk.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor it, but another thing, since we're deployed in all your towers and we talked to Perry about doing this, mobile command centers, essentially anything that can have a little dish on it that can point at any of the city water towers or your big communications tower out there, can be on the internet and have its phone service from anywhere in the county in minutes as long as it can physically see one of those points. So from an emergency operations perspective and things like that, it's, uh, it's got some, some significant possibility.
So we have a motion?
Yes.
And a second? All in favor? Whenever you're ready to start.
Go get busy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. Court to discuss and consider maintenance and operations of the fueling station. Thank you, guys. We appreciate your comments. All right, so, um, on the fueling station, um, there's two aspects to someone who's going to have to take all the information off of there, such as who's getting fuel, at what time, with what vehicle. What I've found out is they can take that and break it up into precinct one, sheriff's department, EMS. So whoever gets that information just takes whichever department, sends it to that department. Talk to Jeremy. He's willing to do that aspect of it. As far as any kind of operations and maintenance at the, uh, fueling station itself, changing filters, um, I don't know what else there would be. If they needed to stick the.
Spraying weeds, sticking, making sure there's no water in the fuel.
Yeah, stuff like that. Uh, gentleman out at the airport has said that they are willing to do that since they kind of do that out there. Now, there will be some training that, uh, the, uh, D and H will do and they'll come and we'll make sure that they're there for that travels. So, um, there have, we are close to getting all set up. The tanks are smaller than we expected. I think when we discussed, when we met them out there, they said they thought they were eight thousand tank, eight thousand gallon. They're only four thousand. It is, it already is, I think, at this point. No, not going to dig them up. Um, there's some TCQ reporting. I'm working on that. Uh, we have to know who's going to be the operator. And I think now that we do, we can get that done. What else is there? Um, there's some water in one of the fuel tanks and the gas tank. I've talked to D and H. They, they're going to go ahead and pull it out and put it in one of the other tanks. That, do y'all have any questions on any of that?
Because I'm forgetting them.
Yeah, still think it'd be good to do, especially if the airport guys will do it.
Yeah, uh, there is a class that one of them will have to attend. Do you mind going to a class? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I talked to Perry three weeks ago about it. We can, we can help these guys out as far as the maintenance.
And the class is just done online.
Is it?
For a year.
Okay.
Give the information as to the one that we.
Okay, all right. Um, and I've talked to David some about this and it sounds like it's going to be pretty cut and drawn, pretty simple on how we maintain it, so. That's, that's pretty much it. I don't know that we need to vote on anything, but do y'all feel like we need to?
Yeah. Yeah, you'll have a record of it if we vote.
That's true.
That doesn't matter to me. I'd like to motion that the airport guys do the maintenance at the fuel station.
Jeremy does the billing.
Yes.
Second.
Court to hear jail's inspection report conducted by Texas Commission on Jail Standards from Sheriff Truitt.
We recently had our state jail inspection where we passed and did a very good job and, uh, had a couple of minor things that, we always have a couple of minor things at that operation. But, uh, I just want to acknowledge Joe William, the general administrator and head account assistant general minister that do an excellent job and keep it, keep it running for us and keep the facility going. So we're good to go for another year.
I'll second that on Joe and Hannah.
Hey, I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I read there were. I know you know that. Tell me why. That in sale three oh five, that was a broke window. That is one thing you got rolled up. How did it get broken?
Inmates break it.
They do.
Yep, with the phone.
With the phone.
Yes, sir. And we're in the process of remedying that to a degree where they have different systems that they can install that doesn't have a handset so that, that could potentially eliminate that. Because they're using a handset to break the glass. That's what they do.
It went on this, I, I, I kind of took, did it said there's in a sale.
Yeah, the set, the phones are inside the shelves.
In, inside?
They're mounted on the walls. Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't know that. They got, they got better than I got. Well, I just thought it was, I just thought it was, I, I, that boy out there couldn't break that window out of that tractor.
Well, you know what?
I didn't know what else.
What they do in that jail constantly amazes us.
They're very inventive for that.
I can tell. Okay, that's how I can do it. You better understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Terry.
Court to consider certification of additional revenue in the form of proceeds from an anonymous donor for Christmas decorations.
This, just like you just said, um, had a donation of three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. It was anonymous. Wants to stay anonymous, but he wants it to go to the Christmas, the annual Christmas decorations that we do here.
We have line down transfers at the first time and that is.
I have two budget amendments. One is the, the one that I just now. One is the one I just now, uh, is it okay if I do the budget amendments first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So one is for the three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars that was donated going into four oh nine forty-five hundred, which is non-departmental maintenance repair miscellaneous. This is the line we use to pay the Christmas decorations. The other one is, um, for the jail. I had certified additional revenue for him last time. And this is putting some of that into his capital, uh, yeah, sheriff, not jail. Sheriff fifty-seven-ten, equipment capital five thousand plus for fifty-nine thousand. Purchased two patrol trucks from the certified funds for the inmates. And we have several line up transfers. First one is the jail, um, and operating supplies, twenty-five hundred out of doctor medical fees addition with the additional inmates. The second one is the sheriff office. Other equipment, a thousand dollars out of fuel and oil. It's for bulletproof vest purchase. Then we have county welfare, which is, they put twenty-five hundred into funeral expense and two thousand into indigent transport out of, uh, drug expense. Then senior center, six hundred dollars into activities, one hundred into dues and memberships out of janitorial supplies, um, to, for insufficient funds for the remainder of the year. So it's getting those ready for the rest of the year. Then we have parks department, pool supplies, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents out of park fuel and oil. Um, they got a late invoice, invoice after the pool was closed, so they had to move that for that. Extension office, A and R travel expense, two hundred dollars out of office rent, two hundred dollars. And precinct two. Um, is from his forty, into his fifty-seven-ten line, capital expense, uh, twenty-six thousand five hundred out of road material and construction. It should be twenty-six thousand total, twenty-six thousand. Replace the burned-up tractor, but God save the man. Thank you, Father. And Craig. EMS, fuel and oil, nine thousand four hundred dollars out of maintenance and repair to cover fuel expenses for the rest of the year.
Much motion would approve. Budget minimum line of transfers.
Constable total is a hundred and eighty thousand two sixty-four thirty-nine.
Much mercy to pay bills.
Looks like everything. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. Entertained motion?
Like the motion would adjourn.
I don't think so. I didn't realize that you have the originals. Do you need a little bit of stuff up here?
Yeah, ten minutes on the saving that kind of money. Jim said?
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Sorry I missed you this morning.
That's all right, can't just get one signature, sure, that's, I got to submit that to Tom.
Okay.
Appreciate you guys having me today. Thanks so much, we'll see you.
All right, thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
How's Melody?
She's good. She went on vacation.
I was asking how Melody was.
Oh, this Melody.
Oh, got you.
Oh. Me, Melody today. I'm great. Have y'all voted? I know.
I did.
Yeah. Y'all have. Don't forget to vote. We had thirty-three yesterday.
I know better.
Do you got to have your dual hic here or can you do it with your license?
License is what we need. I don't know what the dual hic is, what is that?
You got a dual hic?
As long as you have your driver's license.
Did you get yours back?
What?
Your driver's license.
I lost a lot of things, I forgot my license, one, one out. They don't take it away from you when they cut you in Jekyll. They let you go ahead and keep it in there in case you want to go around it.
It's going to be so good, I want to get that.
Yes, I haven't talked to him since Sunday night, but I think that he's.
Yeah, of course, everything.
He's better than she was, but it's going to be a long.
What you sign? All right, I'll bring them down to you.
Plus her head and her blood pressure's messed up. I'm not sure.
I'll do it.
Do it.
I'll do it.
Thank you, sir.
He's good at cleanup, just like me.
I like the mail, so I'll clean it up.
Here, there, all of them, beautiful band.
Yes. His wife, his sister.
Brother.
Yeah. Yeah, his sister though, he'll shim a lot. I'll have a good one.
Yep. I'll do it.